At six thirty, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for showing up this evening. First item on the agenda is review and approval of the minutes from the prior meeting. If anybody's got any additions or corrections, if they'd be kind enough to share them, please do so. Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve the minutes, please.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that takes care of our minutes. Three public hearings tonight. The first one is a zoning and comp plan amendment for Egan.
Yep, so I'll just give background on this project. This is in relation to a proposed development kind of in the South Bend area of Casson. This is on a twelve point five acre parcel. And what's proposed for the development by the Egan Company is an approximately fifty thousand square foot building, which will house some pre-manufacturing of electrical components and assemblies, warehousing, distributing, and some administrative offices as well. And then outside, there's going to be an outdoor contractor yard, parking areas, loading docks, and stormwater facilities as well. The current zoning of the property is C three highway commercial, and the proposed zoning is I one business park, light industrial. The current comp plan future land use designation is retail service commercial, and the proposed comp plan future land use designation is industrial manufacturing business. So with that, the rezoning and regiding of the comp plan are both required as the proposed development does not quite fit under the current zoning and comp plan designations. Just based on the surrounding area, I mean, last planning commission meeting, we had the rezone and regiding of the A and A electric property directly to the west of this property. So in both cases, this would be really an expansion of the surrounding district and comp plan designation.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions for Ian? If not, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anybody has any thoughts or comments they would like to share on the zoning and comp plan amendment for Egan, if they'd be kind enough to come up to the podium and start with your name and address, please. If not, I will close the public hearing. Gentlemen, your thoughts?
To me, it looks like it makes sense. I mean, we've already, we didn't, when that was originally platted out there, there wasn't a industrial, now there is, so. And we just rezoned the ones to the west of them.
Yeah, and we've got other light industrial in the area just further to the east, and it seems to make sense that if there's demand for that, and that's the space they want, that we just change that from retail to industrial.
Yeah, I don't have any problems with it. It makes sense, it fits, it's a, it's a good spot, it's a good location for it, so.
And I can't argue with any one of you, to be honest with you. So, I mean, I read through the packet. Even light manufacturing, there's some restrictions on there as pertains to noise, air pollution, emissions, things of that nature. So I don't think it's going to be a challenge to the residential to the south.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like it'd be any worse than A and A right across the way there, so.
Well, unless there's anything else, I would look for a motion, please.
I'd make the motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would be our recommendation to the city council, sir.
Thank you.
Next public hearing is a zoning amendment for Oscar Meadows.
Yep, so this is a proposed development up in northwest Casson. It's a forty acre parcel. It was annexed into city limits in twenty twenty-two and is currently in the DH Development Holding District. And now for the proposed single-family residential district, it does require a rezone to R one single-family residential district. There'll be more discussion on this particular property during the concept plan review discussion, but for now, this would just be a rezone. There is no requirement for a comp plan future land use designation regiding as it's already within the low-density residential designation there.
We've got to be getting pretty close to the city's property line here, just north of us, right?
I do believe this is at the limits of the city limits, yeah, pretty much.
Any questions for Ian? If not, I'll once again open up the public hearing specifically to the zoning amendment for the Oscar Meadows development. If anyone has any comments they would like to share, if they'd be kind enough to come up to the podium, please.
I'm fairly new in the area, and which area is this forty acre parcel close to?
So it's in northwest Casson, let's see. Do you know where the Wilkers landscaping retaining wall area is? It's directly to the north of that property, yep.
So it's just beyond what's already established, like Twelfth Street Northwest and Eleventh Avenue Northwest.
Correct, yep.
At that corner.
Yep.
Okay, forty acres?
Yep.
How many parcels?
I believe they have around eighty-two proposed right now, so eighty-two new lots.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Once again, gentlemen, your thoughts?
I mean, rezoning the residential is all we're really doing here. I think Ian mentioned that the comp plan will come up again at some other point, right? Not the comp plan, the actual design.
Yep, so later in tonight's meeting, we'll be discussing the concept plan. And then future down the line, we'll be talking about plating when that comes into play, but.
As far as zoning, I don't see any reason why we'd ever zoned anything else in residential, so.
We are kind of burying Mr. Wilker in the middle of all of these residential areas, but.
Yeah, and Mr. Wilker does have a pretty complicated conditional use permit, which we do review from time to time. And there is some pretty heavy screening on the north side of his property as it is.
I mean, that's what's going to tend to happen as the city grows. The businesses on the outskirts are going to be swallowed up, right?
But if he ever wants to expand that business, he's stuck, he's not doing it, really not doing it in that chunk of land.
Right.
He hurries up and buys a chunk of property.
But he didn't buy, you know, the property was for sale, so if he wanted to, that would have been the time.
I'm simply playing devil's advocate here a little bit, just.
I look at it when something's for sale, if you want it, if you, you know.
Don't disagree with him. If there's nothing else, sir, gentlemen, I guess I would look for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That would be our recommendation, sir.
Thank you.
And our last public hearing this evening is a conditional use permit for a fence for Mr. John Kisslinger.
Yep, so this is at nine oh six Eighth Avenue Northeast. This came into the city's attention due to a request for utility locate on the property, which then the city staff followed up with a letter advising the homeowners to apply for a conditional use permit as is required by city ordinance. So in my staff report, you'll note the location of the fence, which has now been constructed as it is on the plan. So really, just on the north side of that property, the fence is built on that shared property line according to the plans. On the rear property line, the fence has been built at least three feet off of that property line. And then on the south, it's just a connection from the house to an existing fence from the neighbors on that side. So with that, we just have the two standard conditions added to this conditional use permit, which are an acknowledgement of the utility easements, and then also an access easement agreement with the property owner to the north.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Ian?
Yeah, just to clarify, you said the north and south of this property already has a fence on the property line?
On part of the property line.
Just doesn't extend the full depth of the lot?
Correct.
Okay. I assume there was no CUP in place for those?
No, those would have been constructed before the requirement for a conditional use permit for fences.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing specifically for the conditional use permit for a fence by Mr. John Kisslinger. If anybody has any comments they'd like to share, if they'd be kind enough to come up to the podium.
My name is Cameron Hartoun. I live at eight.
What was it?
Eight hundred and ten Street Northeast. I'm the lot to the north of his house. And we don't want the fence on the property line. He had built the fence without letting us know or anything. And so we don't, we intend on putting our own privacy fence out. So him putting the fence on the property line is going to push our fence back further in order to maintain both sides of the fence.
Thank you, sir.
That's all my comment.
Any other comments?
My name is John Kisslinger. I'm the petitioner for the use permit. This kind of came up as, as just we were unaware, and we had an opportunity to build the fence with the way that the weather had been. We were, as noted, unaware of the permit requirement. The fences existing to the north and south that were questioned at the beginning of this discussion are belonging to the neighboring properties to us and have been existing for, I don't know how long, we've been there now, approximately three years. To the north, the fence is a straight line extension of twenty-eight and a half feet from the neighboring fence to the north, just extending in a straight line along the property line, twenty-eight and a half feet. The width of the neighbor property is probably somewhere around eighty feet. So it really comes into play just in this one corner. And the, I've tried to engage with my neighbors, but seems like because we didn't go and have a discussion prior to, which we maybe sounds sort of dictated we should have, but didn't, that they were just simply opposed despite trying to find a common middle ground. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you both. Well, this is what we were trying to avoid.
Well, it sounds like regardless of whether we approve the CUP or not, the conditions won't be met anyway if the neighbor's not going to give permission for the fence.
Well, I'm not going to give permission for their fence either. I know where we're at.
Yeah. That's got nothing to do with the city, though. They can, they can fight that out.
Fair enough.
I hate to say it. I mean, feel free to disagree with me, of course, but.
Yeah, I mean, other than that, there's, there's no reason we couldn't approve it. It's kind of unfortunate that there was existing fences there that seemed to have been placed before, you know, anything, regulations were in place.
Yeah, I was just, I don't, it's a, yeah, it's a, John, what kind of fence did you put up?
It's a black chain link, four foot high, which is the same as all of the surrounding.
Yeah, because regardless of whether, whether we approve it or not, it's, I mean, it's ultimately going to be a fight that's going to exclude us one way or the other.
There's nothing saying that we don't table this and don't vote on it with the request of both property owners to go back and figure out some sort of arrangement both sides can live by, and we revisit it next month. And I guess that's kind of where my head is at. Not that they're going to get anywhere, but we gave them every opportunity to do it. Because it sounds like both sides want a fence.
Right.
And if it's simply a debate over either cost or the nature of the fence, in my little mind, and I'm horrible about oversimplifying these things, but in my little mind, it's an exercise in figuring out which fence works best for everybody.
Because it fits in to our past practices of what we do, I mean, so.
I mean, we could also potentially recommend that it, could we split the CUP up so at least, I mean, the southern side, I assume, has no quarrels. So that can at least get approved and through.
But would the conditional use permit cover the southern side if it's not on the property line? Because that was not.
They wouldn't have to get an access agreement to the south or the east.
It's just the north side.
Right.
So I understand your comment, but I don't know if that's really a step forward in this at all. You don't need a conditional use permit if you're not on the property line.
All the existings are on the property line.
Property lines now, because that's how it worked.
Yeah, I would probably lean towards just tabling it. I would like to get Tim's opinion on this, since he happens to be one of the, one of the corners in this. Tim's to the, the.
Southeast.
Southeast corner.
Sorry, which Tim?
Art.
Art Tim, City Administrator, Tim.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
I did not know that.
Yep.
Southeast corner.
I would like to get his opinion and thought on it as a property owner in that. So that's just my thought at this point.
If there's no other thoughts or discussion, I guess I would look for a motion or recommendation.
I would make a recommendation that we table this to next month in hopes that they can meet and talk and discuss, and, and we'll get some more feedback.
We have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion to table, motion in a second. Please forgive me. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Truly, honestly, sincerely, you're much better off figuring out a solution that works for both of you guys than it is coming into here and having us try to figure it out for you. And it's our two cents. But basically, we're not going to decide. Our recommendation to the city council is to make no decision on this in the hopes that you guys can come back with a solution that works for the both of you. Please. Thank you all. Next item this evening, concept plan review for Oscar Meadows.
All right, here. So we've got my staff report included in the packet along with materials of support along with the application. So again, this is the same forty acre parcel in northwest Casson that was recently under consideration for the rezone. So I guess I'll just walk through everything. It's currently being used as a combination of agricultural land and tree farming. And they're proposing to create eighty-two new lots, all for single-family residential housing. Let's see here. I'll just go through each of the points here. So the first point of discussion is about parkland. Prairie View Park exists about a quarter of a mile to the south. And then you'll note in the concept plan, there is a portion of the concept that includes area to be potentially dedicated as parkland along the west side of the property there. As far as street connections go, the existing Eleventh Avenue Northwest is proposed to be extended northwards through the entirety of the site up to a future Sixteenth Street Northwest. Let's see. And then an additional connection to Eighth Avenue Northwest is proposed at a proposed new Fourteenth Street Northwest connection. Also, please see the discussion on this particular connection with the county engineer included in the packets. Okay, and stormwater in Greenway Corridor, similar to the potential park dedication area on the west side of the property, there's a substantial stormwater corridor running along the west side of the property as well. So you'll note that there would be some properties, some lots that have that feature to the rear of those properties there as well. For public and private utilities, the notes from the Public Works Department note that the property, as it was recently annexed, is partially or fully within Excel Service territory. And so the applicants have been guided to work with Public Works staff on how and when to have that being taken over by the city of Casson. And going forward with this concept plan review, there's no official approval or, no approval by the city. This is just for review and comment only, but it is intended to influence the plating process that will come after this.
Any comments, gentlemen? Or any questions?
It looks like this has already had a round or two of going back and forth with engineering. I know there's a note on here saying there's a right-of-way dedicated for that Sixteenth Street that would need to be widened. Is that what I'm seeing, understanding correctly?
I know that the Sixteenth Street is an ongoing conversation that's still being worked out between staff consultants and the applicants themselves.
Yeah, but I've got a drawing here that shows, forgive my eyesight, Eleventh Avenue that's ultimately going through the division to the south of it, actually meeting up with potentially Sixteenth Street.
I'm correct.
Gentlemen, my name's Les Conway. I'm with WSE Massey. I'm the planner for Bigelow Homes on this. And when we brought the property in back in twenty twenty-two, it was intended that we would actually do R one residential. We recognized that the west property line has significant benefit to the city. We'd look for some parkland dedication and actually being able to put the path, which WHKS has some pretty good things going on right now for pedestrian paths going through the city. Utilities would be extended through there, and there's plenty of sanitary and water. The agreement would be for an eighty-foot right-of-way on the property line, similar to what happened about a year ago with the Schuetti property over on the east side. Schuetti dedicated forty feet, and I believe the other forty feet were negotiated with the city of Casson for that right-of-way. Something similar would be here, as well as the county has requested some additional right-of-way for a future roundabout, which is that triangle up in the northeast corner. We'd be looking for single-family residential throughout. We've taken several reviews through the city, both from Ian and from WHKS, and modified this to kind of show a pretty representative format of what we want. And I do believe that simply an acceptance of this concept plan to move forward would allow us to move to preliminary plat and preliminary construction drawings for the first phase, which would be the bottom or southerly, I think it's about eighteen acres. Hard part about this property is, is that there's so many utility easements that run through it. There's a big seventy-foot gas main easement that runs through there. Plus, there's a fifty-foot sanitary easement on the west side over by the drainage ditch. And then there's another of, is that forty or fifty feet on the east side going north from there? That's got to be a forty-foot easement anyways, maybe thirty feet. I don't remember, but anyways, so there's some substantial easements that we have to work around. However, with all of the sanitary there, one of the biggest issues in development these days is actually sanitary sewer, and we have lots of options there. So if you do have any discussion items, we would gladly answer those tonight, but we would like to see this move into an acceptance process so that we can move on to preliminary plat and actually start designing the process. Start designing this subdivision for what we have. So if you have any questions, fire away. I'm more than willing to answer them.
Thank you, sir.
Are these two, the two retention ponds to the south, are those, would those be making what's currently there larger? Or are those in addition to what's already there?
Well, so we don't know the final soil types there. So we showed two soil, we showed two stormwater facilities, because if we have to go to infiltration, we're going to need a segregation, a separation pond, and then a infiltration pond. So right now, at least in the preliminary stages, until we have all of the soil work and we get some geotechnical work done, we're expecting, right now, from what we've seen, there's a lot of sandy soils out there. So both of those would actually go straight into the drainage ditch. I also did the design on Bigelow Voight Eighth, which is south of there.
Yep.
And we used those two ponds to basically go right into that drainage ditch for conveyance. So we would expect to do something similar here.
Is there any, do you know, or even Ian, do you know, is there any, because I do know some, there was some DNR wetland issues to the south, if you continue that.
Well, there are no more, there are no more set-asides. So when we did Bigelow Voight Eighth, way back, this goes back twenty years, we had some set-asides so that we could actually, we didn't have to keep the entire, we didn't have to keep the entire width of the wetlands. We actually were able to limit it to the drainage ditch itself.
Okay.
Those credits are gone, and so whenever we go to the north, and the map that you see, we've already have an approval on those wetlands, and you see how they, there's the two outcrops. So we have to avoid the two outcrops, and then that's why we put the ponds where we put them, so that we can actually, it's a feature that we can use, but we avoid them, and we're going to be going straight into the drainage ditch.
Okay, thank you.
So maybe it's just me, but there's a couple of jogs here in these north-south streets that, to me, kind of look a little haphazard. Were they absolutely necessary? Could they be straightened out a little bit?
Could be, and actually, the cost for the jogs are actually on the developer because it actually costs us a couple of extra manholes, because we have to keep our lines straight. Right now, whenever we were going through the concept plans, we. Right now, whenever we were going through the concept plans, we simply were trying to make, um, the, uh, lots big enough for, um, a hold-down that Bigelow likes to use, so that's why you see those. Um, we'll actually probably get co- uh, comments back whenever we get to the preliminary plat stage, as far as it, but, um, curves in the road actually cost the developer more money than the city, just because we have to add extra structures, but we, basically, we're trying to hold everything from the east to the west and optimize the, the properties along that drainage ditch, cause those are some pretty high-end properties with big acreage that are actually worth a lot of money.
Uh, you're talking about the ones on the west side?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I understand, it's just, the, looking at this aerial plan, it looks very odd having that very slight, I, I don't know, it's probably on here, a measurement of how much it actually jogs over twice on the, uh, is that Eleventh?
So, the concept, the concept is laid out. We still have to come back through here for preliminary plat, and we'll have to optimize those things as best we can, and we'll have to deal with the WHKS, uh, comments on it. But, um, to be honest, people who live in neighborhoods actually kind of like curves and cul-de-sacs, and even though cities hate them.
Yep.
People, people like them a lot.
They are more beneficial, actually, too, cause it actually, depending on the size, slows people down.
Yeah.
It really does.
You got snowplows, you gotta get through there, you gotta, there's something, you gotta go.
That's, that's not our job.
Well, actually, this is a, this is a pretty full-size roadway. I don't have any problem with any of that, and I don't know that there'd be any issues there, but.
They're not like super tight curves, they're just, yeah.
But if you like geometry, I like the fact, I like straight lines, too, but.
I, I, I can, I can see exactly why the, the kind of southwest curve, cause the, the existing Eleventh looks like it's kind of not in a great space for this particular property.
It got kicked over there, and then we wanna get it back and straighten it out, but
But that one's already there.
We were trying to space those lots coming from the east, uh, we were coming up with sixty-six to seventy-foot lots, and that was the alignment that we got, but.
Yeah, and I, I think I was reading the comments that this has already been revised, the lots weren't quite big enough, so it already had to get chubbed once.
That is correct.
So, I can understand why, you know, this is optimal, and it just, it ends up with a, I don't know what that is, it might be like a five-foot, just a little jog right where that tree's in.
I know Brad is still on the, on the TV, and if you ask Brad, he loves curves, and he likes all kinds of fancy things.
I like, I like curves, but that, that little jog, it kind of just bugging me.
You, you won't even notice it when it's done.
Maybe.
Anything else, gentlemen?
I don't have anything else right now.
Thank you.
Do you need anything from us, Ian? Is this?
Um, I don't have, uh, Brad, do you have anything, maybe, or?
No, at the same, I think it's all about getting to the next phase of the project and getting into the details of the plan.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
Nothing else? We can move on?
Yep.
Uh, next up, discussion on landscaping ordinance, Minnesota Ag Group and A&amp;A Electric.
All right, so, um, sort of a background on this discussion. Um, the landscaping plans are, um, required for, um, pretty much every site plan review uh, process that city staff and consultants go through. Um, it's a requirement in the city's code of ordinances, which I've included in the packets just for reference tonight. Um, so you'll, you can see there exactly what, um, staff and consultants go through each time for a site plan review uh, specifically related to, uh, landscaping plans. Um, so with that, there's been two site plan reviews that have come to the city, um, for review within the last several months here, Minnesota Ag Group and the A&amp;A Electric Expansion Projects. Um, and in both cases, the applicants are requesting some sort of deviation from the code. Um, you'll see the two memos and supporting materials that were included with the packet to go along with those requests for deviations from the code. Um, and then kind of my thoughts are on it, just that, um, the code, as it is written right now, doesn't really support a lot of variation when it comes to certain types of, certain types of developments, certain types of uses. Um, you'll see that in the memos supplied by the applicants that, um, there may be particular things about each site that may not support, um, the, the, a full application of the city's ordinances. Um, but that's kind of where it is. And based on my review of the submitted landscaping plans that have come through so far, I mean, both, of course, are not in compliance with the city's ordinances, um, as written. Um, I think I performed some calculations based on the street frontage, which is supposed to give you the amount of trees that are required, and then the calculation based on the amount of new construction you have on the site, which is supposed to give you a certain amount of shrubbery on your site. Um, as you can see in the plans that were submitted for each project, both are not quite up to par with that. Um, so I guess the question for the Planning Commission tonight is really how to move forward with this issue as it's been laid out. Um, I've done some research based on what's included from other cities. Some are more generalized, like Casson's is, where, you know, there's requirements, but it gets applied to each zoning district pretty much, uh, the same. Um, some cities have more varied ordinances, where it's different based on the district, for example. So industrial requirements are different from, commercial requirements are different from residential requirements, that type of thing. Um, I've also done some looking into, um, other changes, or what other, uh, proposed, um, landscaping plans look like. Um, one that I found interesting was from the Minnesota Green Step Cities Program, of which Casson is a member of. Um, and they do have a model landscape ordinance, which brings up a couple of concepts, which I found to be interesting, including, um, alternative compliance, or things like that, and then the option of making landscaping a conditional use process. If you have a case where maybe it's not a good fit, or maybe your property is not the best fit for a true application of the city's ordinances.
So, so the landscaping requirements that we have in our packet where it discusses alternative compliance, that currently is not in place, or?
Right, so that included, that's the Green Step Cities Program model ordinance, but I've also included the city's ordinances, just so you could see, like, what that's like, um.
Has any alternative plan to the city's current ordinance been provided, or have they just come forward and said, hey, this doesn't work for us?
Um.
Yeah, I'm oversimplifying again, forgive me.
Well, so our city ordinances, as it is right now, don't have any provisions for alternative compliance. It's either you have it or you don't. And so, in the case of what I have so far for both of the projects, is that they don't meet the standards as they are. And so that's what, um, is being requested, is a deviation of that in some way. Um, it's just that I feel that the code doesn't really provide for that sort of thing.
Well, I don't think, uh, deviation's gonna be the road we wanna go here, but, uh, Ian, could you clarify, you mentioned in this memo, I'm looking specifically at this line about Minnesota Ag Group.
Uh-huh.
You says the landscape plan would need a minimum of forty-two trees and forty-one shrubs.
Mm-hmm.
And it says, based upon the street frontage and square footage of the new construction.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is it forty, forty-two more than what they're planning, or forty-two total?
Uh, total is what they would need.
Okay, and then could you tell me which specific section of our ordinance is, is causing such a large number of required trees slash shrubs?
Uh, section one fifty-four, point three one zero, general landscaping.
Yeah, can you go a little more specific? A, B, C, D, E, F? Is this part of, uh, section E?
Oh, um, let's see.
Uh, or is it F, where it says off-street parking?
Well, it's, all of it gets applied to this specific site, but the issues, I mean, the, let's see.
Cause.
Only have it grinded on it.
Yeah.
The trees are a portion of the thousand-foot of linear frontage along county.
Uh-huh.
And the bushes are part of the total paved parking on the property.
So this is E two, one canopy or evergreen tree per twenty-five feet of street frontage?
Correct.
That's what's causing the forty-two requirement?
The E two A is the.
Okay, let me, let me just take note of that real quick.
Okay.
So that, that's the one that is, I assume, causing issues with, you know, they don't wanna have to meet that requirement.
Right.
Right?
Uh, part of it, yes.
Uh, E two A, E two A, okay.
I have one question on this. So this building has been existing for, I don't know, how many years?
Right.
Forty, fifty, sixty?
Twenty, twenty-four.
Twenty-four is all? Bishop Walkal?
Well, it was a lot smaller back in the day, but the equipment's got a lot bigger, and the building's got a lot bigger.
Right, but I'm just saying that current building, when it started, this Bishop Walkal was, has been there well before Minnesota Ag Group. And they bought it out. That building was there, there was no requirements when that building was there, and there was no requirements when they added on, or if there was, there was no code compliance. So you're saying now, we're gonna stop them from building a ninety-two hundred square foot building, on a building that's been around for forty years, because they were never in compliance and haven't been in compliance?
But they are now putting an addition onto the building and constructing a new building. So I guess that's kind of what I wanted.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to figure out how, how we can go back and say, we, we've never enforced this, and now all of a sudden.
Cause we do that with everything we do.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, so we're gonna stop, we're gonna stop growth and.
Yeah, I, I agree with Ian. One of the things that I thought, too, was like, are any businesses in the area meeting our requirements right now?
No.
Because I'm looking at the aerial view. Quick Trip is?
No, not even close.
Well, the north, they did, yes.
The, the new, the new one.
I was gonna say, cause the south store doesn't look like it, doesn't.
No, those trees are planted over a hundred feet apart.
So, I, so other than the new Quick Trip, is anywhere in town meeting these requirements? And I guess then, secondly, how new is this ordinance that we put in? Cause I'm new, so I don't know how long it's been.
Brad, Brad can actually talk to this. Les Conway.
Ordinance has come up.
Les, Les Conway, again, with WSE Massey, and both of these are my projects.
Sure.
And so when we came into this, and I even had the discussion with Brad, that landscaping ordinance has been around for a pretty long time, and it wasn't updated whenever Casson updated their zoning code in twenty-seventeen. However, the zoning code still had landscaping requirements. But I wrote both of those memos, and whenever this, uh, industrial and commercial park was developed, the, um, requirements specifically, let's just take Minnesota Ag. The county doesn't want a bunch of trees along that right-of-way, and on the north side, it's Mendot right-of-way, and all of those parcels on the north side, or, uh, along, uh, Highway fourteen, are built basically as far up to their property line as possible, and there's, Mendot won't allow any trees in there. I was very happy whenever Ian actually said, we should bring this to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And when you say, no, we don't want to have exceptions, I believe that the point here is, is that when you actually look at Quick Trip, and you look at all of their frontage, there's no way that they comply with trees every thirty-five feet. There, there's absolutely no way that they actually even comply with it. They do have dense, uh, plantings at three or four locations, but there aren't any plantings along Mantleville Avenue, which is again a state highway. County thirteen is a county road. The county doesn't want any trees there, and there's none there, except for the corner of, is that Bigelow Paint, where they have a dead corner, and they planted some evergreen trees. And the only other location is, is the hotel that has some trees planted along there, but none of those meet any of the requirements that are currently in the landscaping code. I think what I would ask, and I think Ian's on the right track here, is that we get some information from Planning and Zoning, you guys, that basically say we're allowed to negotiate with staff, because I knew Joel Bigelow, and I've been around a long time, and it was never the intention that there be density or intense plantings in any of this area out there. And there isn't right now. There's a lot of those places that don't have a single shrub or a single landscaping package, um, around them. Quick Trip did some things, but on their sides, there's nothing on highway, there's nothing on the county road. There's some stuff along the North-South Road, which is Seventh, Fourth, it's the, it's the street there.
Fourth, I think.
There's, there's over, there's over a thousand feet of frontage there, and there's eight trees. So those don't even come close to even compliance, and then they have some stuff on the south side. So the recommendation, or the packages that I put together, kind of match those at A&amp;A with, you know, similar density, trees planted about every feet, eighty feet across there on the Boulevard, and then several trees planted on the south boundary line. But we don't have any options at Minnesota Ag, and we'd like to instead come in with dense plantings of prairie plantings, which is a big thing these days. But there isn't any reason to put trees on the laydown area for that big implement, um, uh, deal. And I think what we're looking for is for you guys to actually give us an opportunity to negotiate with uh, staff and WHKS, and come up with some ideas that actually will allow that. Because here's the other one, you're gonna, you see the exact same problem whenever Egan comes in there. You just approved Egan's, um, comp plan revision, and they got twelve acres that are gonna be there, even though they do have limited frontage, but they're gonna have a huge property line, uh, or a huge parking lot that's gonna require a lot of density. All we're asking is, is that we have an opportunity to negotiate straight up with staff and come up with as best we can, some options here, because right now, that whole area wasn't designed for this kind of density.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to just make a couple of comments here.
Yes, please, please, Brad.
Um, when we did the zoning ordinance update back in twenty-seventeen, and even receding that with the comprehensive plan, um, a lot of the, the broader input that we received led to zoning ordinance amendments. And so, very high level, and you guys know this, so I'm, I'm just getting a couple of things. We have landscaping for two primary purposes. One is visual aesthetics. And so we, we combine landscaping with buffer and screenings. And then the second one is environmental health, essentially, whether it be water quality, air quality, or whatever. A place with no trees is one thing, a place with, with trees is another. But we have to balance that very carefully with economic development objectives and goals. And so as we're looking at this landscape ordinance, one thing that we didn't do a lot of is give the flexibility uh, that Mr. Conway is talking about. I would not refer to it as putting something in there that gives an applicant the ability to negotiate with staff. That's not what staff's role is. I think that if you start negotiating, that's more of a council role, uh, if you're, you're actually negotiating something. So to us, we're, we're looking at trying to create, um, possibly some modifications that help better balance economic development with the object, broader objectives we have of aesthetics and environmental health. Um, the, the landscape ordinance that we have here is pretty general. We also were not trying to create this overly complex monstrosity of a landscape ordinance that tries to spell out every, every single provision. And there are examples, and the end included, I think a good one from Green Step Cities, that was actually being created about the same time as we were, were updating the code. Um, and it has some places in there where there are alternative approaches. What I would like to say, and what I know I said to Mr. Conway and, and the owner of, um, of the Influen dealership, we recognize there may be a specific use where you don't wanna have big ornamental trees, or they're gonna get in the way of, of how you use the property. So one example of, of alternatives that needs to be built into this is the ability to create a landscape plan. Maybe you're not planting forty-two trees, but there's other clustering of landscaping that can be done that's more lower level. It can, can sort of match or create an equal to what forty-two trees might be. So the forty-two trees is a count, right? It's based on a standard. It's not saying you have to space them every twenty-five feet or every thirty-five feet. You need to have a plan, since here's how we're gonna landscape the site. So, so that flexibility is already built into here, but I think the question is, can you, can you create some other flexibility? But I think the question is, can you, can you create some other flexibility, um, that gives an applicant the ability to create the design that works for the site? The other side of the flexibility is to the point that was raised earlier about you have an existing building and now they're expanding it. And, and are we gonna create, uh, a roadblock because the cost for that landscaping is now gonna make that expansion not feasible in the owner's eyes or in the applicant's eyes? And that's purely a cost thing in many cases. Yes, there's unique situations like Minnesota Ag that has, I think, utilities went on one side and Mendat ran away on the other side and the way that property was set up, they don't have a lot of room. Um, but the, the idea is to create flexibility also in line of respecting challenges for redevelopment. And so, there may be existing site plan improvements that we can factor into this. Um, often the forty-two trees are not new trees. If you've got twenty trees on the site already, those forty-two can fit, can be chummed towards that. So I think part of this is direction from Planning Commission to say, staff, we want you to work on trying to create a mechanism that offers that flexibility, go back and modify the code. It's not an amendment to the code, or it's not a variance that we wanna pursue here. It's really an amendment to the code that, that offers some flexibility. It could be reducing those standards. It's, it's really that, that's where the conversation needs to be had on the Planning Commission. And then ultimately to council, making an amendment to the landscape code. But I, I do think there can be some improvements made, and that's really what we're asking this conversation to be because of the two recent projects that have had a lot of pushback on meeting landscape standards.
Thank you, sir.
I mean, there's some verbiage in here. And this is, I'm looking at page three of what is the landscape requirements. And this is the model landscape ordinance for a municipal zoning code where it says alternate compliance. Now, the city manager may approve or recommend the city approve the substitution or reduction of landscape plant materials, landscape area, or other landscaping or screening standards upon the following five listings. And as opposed to me reading them, I hope you guys can, can kinda track this down and look at it. But, yeah, I mean, I, just chucking it out the window doesn't necessarily seem like the smartest path forward. But putting somebody within the city in a position to make a reasonable path. As politely as I can, sir, this is not a public hearing.
Well, I figured we all had a chance to speak, but that's fine.
Well, I'm, I'm pretty sure we've heard your thoughts on the matter and know where your head's at, but thank you. Um, I, I guess in terms of a sane path forward, you know, it, it strikes me as a reasonable place to have that conversation.
Yeah, I agree a lot with what Brad said. Um, I think there's some things in here that, um, kinda set a hard requirement that doesn't allow for any flexibility. And that maybe those need to be reviewed, um, and altered. Um, and I agree with what you said, is I don't, I don't think we wanna be doing deviations and variations. We should look at updating the whole ordinance to make it more, in this case, reasonable, I think, uh, uh, of an ask.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. I don't, I don't think we need to be making, making changes or, you know, variances to the, the code that we have. If the code that we have, we don't feel is flexible enough, then we need to make sure that we have options in there so we can do that.
Pardon me.
You know, I, I don't, I don't disagree that, that we don't, I think it would look stupid if they put forty-two trees along the, along the roadway or, you know, whatever, whatever the number ultimately ends up to be.
Also, it's hard to put them along there when there's, when you keep going to County or State right-of-way.
Exactly, you know, so, but this, this unfortunately is just a really, really unique situation, I think, that, you know. But it is also, like he said, it's, you know, we are going to have this again as, you know, as Egan's property comes up and, and, you know, and as we continue, um, to grow in that area with, with some of the industrial stuff that we're, we're seeing come, you know, to that area. So I, I think it's, it's unfortunate that we've got two plans that are sitting kinda, not necessarily on hold, but, but idle because of it. But, uh, it's, it's a good opportunity to make sure that we've got things in, you know, the right way so we can be flexible.
Cause I mean, if you look at the overhead view, in that whole commercial park and Seventh Street businesses, there's one property out of all of them that has...
Yeah, I, we, we just need to make sure that we can be flexible. So, and, and right now, uh, our ordinance isn't flexible, so.
So if we, if we wanted to further the conversation, Ian, and, and actually have a formal public hearing as opposed to, to not, is there a recommendation on a, on a path forward, sir?
Um, well, um, I think for the next meeting, I could come up with an, an example ordinance to potentially, uh, recommend approval of, that would take into consideration this discussion that we've had today. Um, then that would be a public hearing as it would be a code change.
Reasonable place to start?
Yeah, so you would be able to have that on the February, is there a time or...
I probably could, yeah.
And in the meantime, I think we can have conversations about if there's a way we can allow those current applications to continue or with other elements as we do this.
Without a doubt. I mean, is that a conversation at this level, Brad, or is that a conversation for the council?
No, that, I think that's more of a conversation at, at staff level on the back plan reviews and their building permit. And conversations with, yeah, shall have to attend on their timeframe. But the idea is not to try to hold them up, to try to find a, a path forward, like you said.
Yeah, absolutely.
To do that, we don't wanna compromise the integrity of why we have a landscape ordinance. But at the same time, um, we just need to strike that balance. So if Ian can do, do that and bring that back to you, then great. I'll support him where I can.
Uh, thanks.
No pressure.
Um, okay.
There, there are a lot of good examples where that balance can be met. And it just requires a little time to look at it and, and find the right solution for Cassin.
Okay. Could I get, uh, an official recommendation, please?
From me, or do you want us to vote on the matter? Do you wanna, but what would you like, sir?
I think, I think a motion, I would suggest a motion directing staff to, to work on revisions to the landscape ordinance that's discussed and bring it back for a public hearing at the next planning commission. To let council know, you know, if you guys wanna move forward with the direction, and that's good enough.
Uh, I will make that motion.
Thank you, Dan. We do have, we do have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that would be our recommendations.
Thank you very much.
Formalities.
Linda's not here, so I have to...
Understand it, understand it. Uh, next up, resolution supporting TIF district, specifically edge apartments.
Yeah, so a few items included in your packets tonight, specifically regarding this project. Um, just a reminder, if you step out the door, to please sign in on the, on the shoot if you have not already, please, and thank you. Um, back to the TIF thing. Um, as you're probably aware about the affordable apartment project for the Vale, um, Vale Second subdivision. Um, just a few items in your packet. The draft TIF plan, um, within it includes a couple of things that I mentioned in my memo. Um, specifically on the pages that have the map showing the municipal development district, which is supposed to be coterminous with, um, city limits. And then also the highlighted bit, which will include the future, um, TIF district itself for the apartment project, which is also included on that map. So this, um, resolution that the Planning Commission has asked to approve tonight is, um, just an important part of the approval process for TIF.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
So how many units are going to be dedicated to low and moderate income families in this particular project?
Uh, forty-eight unit apartment building.
Are they all for, for low and moderate income family?
Um, yes, I do believe so.
And do we have a, a definition, a rule of thumb for how we define low and moderate income?
Um, there are. I think in this project, it's sixty percent of the area median income is the, is the cutoff there.
Correct.
Um, let's see. Let's see. Yeah.
That's what we'll go with in terms of our, okay.
Yeah, there's, there's like different requirements for TIF, yeah. Section twelve, thank you. Um, so like just generally speaking, it says that forty percent of the units have to be, uh, given to families with incomes at or below sixty percent of the county median income. Or twenty percent of the units rented to families with incomes at or below fifty percent of the county median income. So that, those are the minimum requirements. You kinda have different options according to the, the TIF district, um, rules.
Gentlemen, any thoughts or comments? And I will be honest, TIF districts don't exactly come up a lot at Planning and Zoning. I wouldn't exactly call this a area of strength or a lot of experience for me personally, anyway.
Um, did we do a TIF for the adjacent apartment building?
Oh, no.
The Vale one didn't get a TIF?
They didn't request.
They, they didn't request, yeah, it's market rate. This one will be affordable. And TIF helps to pay for the project costs.
Right, and, um...
It's the only way they can do it.
Okay.
Is it normal for such a high percentage of the dollars being offered up to go to finance costs? I mean, you've got four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars here and a hundred and ninety-six thousand of that, I believe, is bond and note interest payments. So a little over half of the total dollars is going to site improvement. I, I guess, and again, this is just my own personal ignorance. I don't run into, or I've not seen a lot of, of TIF-type programs.
Typically, the, and I, I can't, I don't know as much about this particular project, but typically the Planning Commission, and I, I'm not an expert in that area either, Tom. The, the Planning Commission's role to talk about the use and the land use.
Oh, okay.
Of course, it's the TIF district from the, sort of the comprehensive use perspective. Uh, and then the council gets into the weeds on the money side of it. But I'm not sure that's why this is coming to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Yes, sorry, I should be more, uh, the TIF plan included isn't what you're approving tonight. It's simply the, the municipal district map showing the city limits boundary and the location of the TIF district itself, which is the, the part of the Vale Second subdivision that was recently plotted.
Thank you for the clarification, sir. My, my ignorance, I, I, I read everything you send out, read it out.
Thank you.
I'm impressed.
I don't see any negatives. I, I think we need a few options for housing on this end of the spectrum. We've got Mr. Bigelow doing what Mr. Bigelow does on the other end of town. Other areas of town, so.
This is what has been requested of the people. They wanted more housing.
Yeah.
More housing, more business. And it fits in.
Just, just to be clear, the, I think the resolutions on page seventy-one of the PDF in your packet.
Yep.
And there's that, gross development, what you're finding is, the need to be is that the project is consistent with the city's development plan and zoning ordinances? That's what I was trying to say earlier. That's what the Planning Commission's role is. So this is part of the TIF statutes, that the planning body must find that the, the development being proposed is consistent with the comprehensive plan and zoning. And you've already approved the project, so it's always kinda one of these things where I'm not sure why it has to come back. But, but essentially, that's when your action is...
Yeah, understood, sir. I, I was having some of the same questions as you, so.
Yeah, I was looking for the ordinance, the resolution, I thought it...
Unless there's any further questions, thoughts, or comments, gentlemen, I, I guess we're looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion. To approve.
Motion to approve. We, we have a motion in support of our TIF district, in, in support of our TIF district. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that would be our recommendations, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, next item up is other business. And I only have one question.
Yep.
How was our parking evaluation going? Have we, we made any conclusions in terms of, of available street parking and whatnot? The project you were working on here, the tail end of next year? Or is there any status update on that?
Well, let's see, I think Tim presented the results of the parking study that I had done.
Okay.
Um...
Are we just gonna keep things the way they are, sir?
Oh, oh, there was no, um...
No action?
And, well, yes.
Basically, it's pretty much come, there's no action until it deems necessary. Whereas, you know, then council's looking at Blacktop and maybe Behind the Legion. And then maybe doing some bump outs on Main Street. But they're gonna take the parking, or, you know, what do you call it? Survey project and use it for future. So like if Main Street determines that it needs to be redone and restriped, they'll look at changing the widths of this and such. So they'll, they'll use it, but there's no immediate action.
Right, yeah.
Is a part of the work being done at the liquor store, are we gonna pave out that entire parking lot?
Yep, the liquor store will get paved and then if it fits into the budgeting and such, Behind the Legion and potential bump outs and stop signs on Main Street. Which are existing there, as you see now, where the cones are.
So when you say Behind the Legion, just the Legion's portion of that lot or all of it?
Everything the city owns.
The entire bit?
Up to, to what we can do, you know, cause of the rightways and that's on, it's on the radar. If budgeting and the funding's out.
I was just being nosey. Uh, does anybody else have anything I'd like to discuss this evening?
I do not.
If not, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you all again for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Thanks, Brad.
Good evening, Brad.
And Tim could verify that more.